Evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council workshop to set our agenda for the June meeting. I'm going to ask Mark Atkins to do our prayer and Tom Rose, if you'll lead us in our pledge, please, if you'll all stand with us.
Let's pray. Father, we just come to you today with grateful hearts, Father, for our community, the place we live. We're so fortunate to have a place like this to call home with so many other people aren't as fortunate, Father. We think of the people in Ukraine that are fighting for their lives and for their homes. Father, we also want to remember all those that sacrificed their life for our country. This Memorial Weekend, Father, we just pray that everybody remembers what the reason is for. And Lord, just go with the students and the families that were selfishly and unneedlessly taken the lives of in the Texas school. Father, we just pray for those families. We pray for those children. And Father, just continue to watch over us and bless us here. Forgive us where we fail you. It's in your name we pray it. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark and Tom. Okay, we will now move into our items for discussion. Our first is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with GNW Diesel EVS for the fire department self-contained breathing apparatus annual flow testing. Chief?
Mayor, council, again, we bring to you this evening another annual bid. It is to test our self-contained breathing apparatus and we would ask the council to give the mayor permission to sign the contract, please.
Counsel, any questions on this one? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item two, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Solitude Lake Management relative to the annual maintenance for the pond at J.J. McWilliams Old Rock School Park. Hey, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is an annual agreement we've been doing for about five years now and it basically controls the algae and the weeds and the pond over at the library, just keeps that unit running like it should. And we just asked for you to consider this contract.
Questions for Mike on this. Okay, we'll move on to item three, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an annual service agreement with BHT Resources relative to the park system concession stands.
Yes, ma'am. This is something new. Basically, we were having some issues with them picking up at all the concessions or all the parks that needed to be picked up. So they recommended doing an agreement. So we put that before our legal team after I saw some of the terms and conditions and we put our addendum with it. So basically, it's no cost to town to pick up the oils and it does include the event center as well. We have a bin out back there, but most of this concession oil and cooking oil that they'll take and recycle.
Questions for Mike on this. Okay, we'll move on to item number four, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a performance agreement with Mark Oliverius relative to the music and sound for the 2022 Independence Day celebration.
Yes, ma'am. We're changing it up a little bit this year, but the name of the band is the Nashville Hitman and they play just a variety of music. And we found them just on some of the sites. I know Marty worked hard to find some different bands this year. So it's a variety of music they'll play. They'll provide the sound and the music for $2,500. And I got a commitment, Marty. They start at $3,000. He got them down to $2,500.
Great. Questions for Mike on this. Okay, we'll move on to item five, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with TDOT for access to live video and information sharing as part of the closed caption television system along the I-24 smart corridor.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor, council. This is an agreement between us and TDOT. It doesn't cost the town any money. It's just any video cameras that they put along the smart corridor, we'll be able to view those and access those as well as along state roads through Smyrna.
Questions for Tom on this. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item six, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement with Sweeping Corporation of America for roadway sweeping.
Yes, this is an extension agreement with Sweeping Corp. They were, they did get the annual contract for that and it expired. So this is just a annual extension with them.
Questions for Tom on this one. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Army Corps of Engineers for a drainage easement along the north side of Old Jefferson Pike to connect existing easements.
Yes, there was a couple of existing easements on, one of them on one side of Old Jefferson Pike and the south side of it, and another one along the north side going out toward the river. But years ago, when they put this easement agreement together, they, for some reason, missed this little easement in between the two to connect them. And this is an agreement with the Corps to be able to provide that easement so that we can clean out any ditches along that section of their property.
Questions for Tom on this?
Tom, the water that stands when it exists on the south side, will this clean out, move that water underneath the road over to the north side to get it to the lake? Or is that still going to be standing there?
I read in here where it talked about cleaning it out some and it said some cleaner out for that, that pipe that goes underneath.
Well, the pipe that goes under Old Jefferson Pike is above the lowest elevation of that depressional area.
It is.
So when, when the whole thing is filled on both sides, it will communicate from one side to the other. But once it goes down below the elevation of that pipe, there will still be standing water on that south side of Jefferson Pike behind the homes.
The, and there's not another pipe where this new easement's going, there's not going to be another pipe up a little bit further, I guess in this case would be up towards, I guess be further west. It's just going to go, it just gives an easement on the north side to get that water down to that area. Is that correct?
Yes, it would just be to convey that water out toward a sinkhole.
Okay. And you probably don't want to answer this, but in the picture, there is a property line that's there and I don't know, I assume that that belongs to, that also belongs to the Corps.
You're talking about this one right here?
That one little small area at kind of the top of the picture.
Uh.
Where they, see the?
This one?
I can't see it from here. Yes. I'm talking about this one. Yes, this part right here, that little area there. Who owns that? Do you know?
I believe that's Corps property. I can check and make sure.
Okay. There was some questions about that for years and I just wondered.
Okay.
I'm sure it is Corps because part of your area that you're getting an easement for goes into that part too. So I'm sure they couldn't give it to you unless they owned it.
Yes, yeah, that's true.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item eight, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to approve the rankings of the selection committee of the Old Nashville Highway Sidewalk Improvement Projects using a CHRISAA grant.
Yes, this is a, since this is a TDOT-funded grant or grant through local programs in TDOT, we had to go out to RFQ for an engineering firm for the Old Nashville Highway Sidewalk Improvement Projects. Respondents included Kim Lee Horn, Call Your Engineering, and Wiser. The selection committee ranked Kim Lee Horn first and we're asking you for approval on that ranking.
Questions for Tom on this?
Can you describe what this project's going to be?
This is to improve existing sidewalks and bring them into ADA compliance, to add ramps, any crosswalks, crosswalk signage, any pedestrian signals along the route between Enin, along Old Nashville Highway between Enin Springs Road and Rock Springs Road.
They won't be wider or anything like that?
No, sir.
Sure and I'm up?
Yes.
Adding truncated domes, things like that?
Yes, sir, as bright as we can.
Anything else?
Make them glow.
Be kind, HG, be kind. Item nine, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to approve the rankings for the selection. Did we just do, no, this one is for the Enin Springs sidewalk improvements projects using a TAP grant.
Yes, yeah, this is the other grant. We received a TAP grant and the selection committee. We have three respondents as well, Kim Lee Horn, Call Your Engineering, and Wiser. And the committee selected Kim Lee Horn as the first ranking.
Okay.
Essentially does the same thing?
Yes.
Item ten, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Eye in the Sky to upgrade the camera systems for the water treatment plant. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. So we've been working on this for a while. It's a very antiquated system at the water plant. This kind of ties into the risk and resiliency thing we had to do for the EPA where we evaluated our risk and the levels of risk. So what we'll do on this one, we had originally planned on using MR Systems, which we have under contract with the plant, but Eye in the Sky came in significantly cheaper and we were able to piggyback on their bid that they did with Metro.
Okay, questions for Mike on this?
Mike, when you see such a difference between two bids, how do you flesh that out?
This is in Eye in the Sky's wheelhouse. MR Systems does this. In addition to SCADA, SCADA stuff is kind of what's in their wheelhouse. So this is really what Eye in the Sky, the Eye in the Sky folks do. So, and they did come highly recommended from Metro also.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, we will put that on the agenda and move on to item eleven, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute annual bid documents for several suppliers relative to water, gas, and sewer.
This is our annual bid of materials. It is a lot different than we've seen in the past. A lot of the vendors would not hold their pricing firm, you know, are saying we may have to do pricing increases. Gas meters, residential gas meters, for example, they did hold their pricing, but the delivery time's 50 weeks. So we're seeing a lot of different things. This may change a little bit after discussions with legal on how we need to do some things within this agreement before the council meeting, but I will, I will get that in and communicate that with you guys.
Okay. Questions for Mike? Okay, we will move on to item twelve, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the water treatment plant 2022-2023 annual bid contracts for chemicals.
Yes, ma'am. This is, as you said, the annual bid for chemicals. We don't see the issues like we do with the gas, water, and sewer material as far as time, but we do see a cost increase here that, that will have an effect, so.
Questions for Mike on this one? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item thirteen, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Surtant to provide managed firewall and security operations center services.
Mayor, council, IT security is a significant priority for us. We are in the office five days a week, but those would do us harm are here, 724-365, trying to do things. So to improve our security posture, we're requesting the purchase of one year of firewall and security operations center services from Surtant to, really to monitor our environment 24/7/365 and they can alert us if anything is going awry.
Questions on this? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item fourteen, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 28, partial 83.00 to go from R1 to C2. It's requested by Edward Clark. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately one acre and is located at 14001 Old Nashville Highway, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor and council, this is a rezoning request on Old Nashville Highway about 250 feet south of the intersection with Rock Springs Road. Land use plan would support. This is actually just fall within our Sam Really Corridor character area. So the proposed zoning is consistent with our land use plan. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2, C4, and R1. The planning commission did recommend approval of this and there's been no changes on this since we looked at it on first reading.
Okay, questions for Kevin? Seeing none, we will move on to item fifteen, which is consideration of an ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2022-2023, and this is a second reading. Rex?
Mayor and council, the ordinance and summarized budget for fiscal year 2023 are submitted for your consideration. I have attached the changes from first read to second read spreadsheet for your convenience. It details the budget changes from what was presented at the first reading. It is some payroll adjustments from the Human Resources Department, fire department software, changed financing sources on some road projects, and a Cedarstone restroom funding.
Questions for Rex? Okay, we will put those on the agenda for the second reading of our budget. Item sixteen is consideration of an ordinance relative to a budget amendment for the fiscal year 2022, and this is a second reading.
These are the fiscal year 2022 budget amendments. There are several funds that have some line items that need appropriated. The significant portions of the amendments are due to the pay increase and related benefits, along with the computer infrastructure project. The smaller items were due to the increase in the cost of gasoline and unforeseen expenses. Please see, the proposed ordinance and these amounts are offset by current year revenues. I have added a budget amendment since the first reading for the year-end transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund. This is an estimated high number. I actually think the ending number to be somewhere around $8 million.
Questions for Rex on this? Okay, we will put that on the agenda and move on to item seventeen, which is consideration of an ordinance adopting property tax rate for the fiscal year 2022-2023, and this is a second reading, but we finally got the number.
Well, it changed since yesterday.
Oh.
Well, it did change yesterday. Brian met with the, Rob Mitchell, with the assessor's office, and the number that you have in your packet is .5190 and the actual number is .5193. So, but we're, we're recommending the town adopt the certified tax rate, whatever that number may be, winds up to be.
Okay, going from 70 cents or 7, .70 whatever, whatever, whatever it was. I'm sure you know that off the.
.7007.
There you go. Any questions on this? Okay, then we will add that to our agenda and move on to item eighteen, which is consideration of the classification and compensation plan for the town's positions for fiscal year 2022-2023. Hey, Jeff?
Mayor, council, as we do each budget year, we present you the classification and compensation plan for your review and approval. The class plan is what sets the pay range for each of our pay grades, which sets the minimum and the maximum amount of pay for each of our positions. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions on this? Okay, we will put that on the agenda and move on to item nineteen, which is approval of a resolution to adopt the 2022 revision of the Rutherford County Hazard Mitigation Plan. You taking that, Jeff?
I can take that.
Perfect.
This resolution, this is under the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, communities must have a plan to receive funding to deal with disasters and other hazardous events. This is an updated plan that involves all four municipalities within Rutherford County as well as Rutherford County as well. And this plan is affirmation of adopting that for Smyrna's part.
Questions for Jeff on this? Okay, then we'll move on to item twenty, which is consideration of a change of, to the term to the Smyrna Police Department Standard Operating Procedures relative to the officer's facial hair. Well, it's almost the birthday, boy, tomorrow.
Thank you. Yes.
Gee, you got a little red there.
Yeah. I'm actually eligible for social security tomorrow.
Oh, very good. So a big birthday.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, it is. Yeah. Yes, ma'am. We were asking the mayor and the council to consider a change to our policy in regards to facial hair. And again, this is just an attempt at trying to retain the officers we have because it's become a sign across the nation of a lot of departments that are adopting beards and, and things of that nature. As you can tell from the policy, we have standards placed in there to keep it from getting extreme. So hopefully you won't see anything like Duck Dynasty and things like that out in, out in our uniforms.
Questions for Chief on this?
Feel like quacking a little. Chief, I will ask you, and I think I know the answer. You don't have any officers that have to wear SCBA's, that's all. Chief Coberson's group, is that correct?
For the most part. Now, our SWAT team has to wear gas masks, but due to the fact that approximately two or three years ago, we started doing the no shave November and December. And so the SWAT team practiced then on a well-groomed beard to make sure that those gas masks would fit. And so they will with a well-groomed beard. And they're the only ones that have that.
Other questions on this? Okay, thank you, Chief. Um, consideration of changes to the terms of Smyrna Police Department Standard Operating Procedures regarding the storage of evidence on a temporary basis for the purpose of processing.
Yes, ma'am. This is a change in our evidence policy in regards to our crime scene officers right now currently. If they get a piece of evidence in, they take it in the lab to work on it. And if by chance they happen to get a call to secure it, they are taking it and having to place it in the evidence room. Well, if it's late at night, the evidence officer isn't there. So they're going to have to wait till the next day to be able to complete this process. And what this does, this gives us a temporary storage and maintains that chain of custody is it in a Cliff Notes version there.
Okay. Questions for Chief on this?
They have to put it in the evidence room. And then in turn, say, for example, the officer goes out, he answers a call, and he's still got four hours left in his shift and he wants to come back and work on the evidence. He can't. The only one that has access to the evidence room is the evidence officer and Captain Lear. Nobody else, even myself. I did not have keys that room.
I want to point out one thing as we talk through this process and built this, there are some cabinets in the, the lab, the crime lab, that we are going to be securing with locks so that it'll be similar, there'll be locks that only that officer will have a key to get back in there. But at no time will there be guns, drugs, or cash stored in there. Any of that will go directly to the evidence locker and not be able to get moved. This, this is really just for fingerprinting, you know, sampling, those kind of things, so.
And it states that in the, in the policy.
In the policy. We had a lot of conversation about this before we.
Questions for Chief? Thanks, Chief.
Very well, thank you.
Other?
I would like, if you don't mind, under other, I would like to have Chris and Jim step out from the, I call it the box, but the, the room over here. I want to introduce these two folks to you. These are two new employees. Chris Good. Chris comes to us with a great background in video and some other things that she's done professionally and she will be our new, and I don't, our video and I don't know the exact title of the job. And I told her all week as I went around introducing her to the folks, but she'll be responsible for our video, for our webpage, and for our social media, and a producer inside the box as far as our Channel Three stuff. So we welcome Chris to the team.
Great.
Jim, Arby, Jim comes to us after 28 years with Channel Four, is a reporter and done some photographer and so on.
Photographer.
Okay, okay. But anyway, he comes to us with a great background and he is our new PIO. I want to, I think each of you probably stopped by and met him as you came in. And I know the mayor came in the other day. We had a chance to introduce him, but wanted to recognize him on television so the community can see him as well. We appreciate and looking forward to a good career of them working with the town of Smyrna. We're very excited to have him.
Well, welcome to the team. We are excited that you are here, here with us and we've got a great community. And if you don't already know that, I know that you do, I think you'll learn that very quickly. So we are glad to have both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else under other?
Come in.
Status reports, Hal, anything? Chief, have a good day tomorrow?
Going to St. Louis to see the car.
Ah, I hope it's productive for you. Steve?
Thank you.
Kevin? Kevin, you've had your haircut.
Birthday haircut, she knows.
She sees everything. Just one quick update, because I know we've had several folks in the community wondering. I finally did get a date from FEMA on the, we, they say they're going to have the maps to us by the end of June. Of course, then I got a little email that says it may be later, you know, like it could be August or something. So, but at least we are getting closer to when we'll have the new maps. It'll be, they won't be effective for six months after they give them to us, give us that time. There is, are going to have to be some, some changes to our ordinance with the new effective dates and things like that. So our zoning ordinance, so give us a little time to make those changes before they actually are in effect. But I did want to bring that up to you.
Great. Any questions for Kevin? Thanks, Kevin. Mike Moss?
I'm back.
Charles?
Mayor and council, Lowery Street Utility. Mayor and council, Lowry Street Utilities are continuing. We have completed removing all the overhead utilities from the project that was completed Sunday. Like I said, we're still working on our streetlights. They're completely finished on the east side, and they're starting up on the west side, as do, and our prime contractor is scheduled to come in next week to do the lane shift on Lowry. Lee Victory Rec Park sidewalks and curb are just about complete, and we're looking at a completion date of June seventeenth for the project, except for landscaping, which we're going to push off into the fall, just to help Mike from having to water plants all summer.
Gotcha.
And Spring Hill Drive and Jenny Lane, the bid notices are to go out on June seventh for a June twenty-third bid opening for both projects.
Great. Questions for Charles? Thank you, sir. Carl?
I'm here.
Jeff?
I'm here.
Tom?
I'm here.
Mike? Rex? Todd? Chief? Amber? Brian?
Mayor, council, just a couple of things real quick. I hate to start out with tragedy, but wanted to recognize a couple of things that have happened since the last time we met. We have a dispatcher named Brandon Jones, and his sister actually worked for us full-time years ago. She's a nurse now, but she's come back and dispatching, working part-time with us. Their father passed away about a week or week and a half or so ago, and just to want to extend condolences to that family. Jelaine, NoDine, I think all of you are aware, I've tried to keep you up to date on what was going on in that situation, but that was her grandson that was killed in the horrific wreck out on Dejarnet and Highway ninety-six, so I know that family will very much covet our prayers as they deal with this tragedy and eleven-year-old son passing. Couple of things that I wanted to share with you, I received two really nice notes. One addressed to Ms. Courtney down at the SOAC, and she was instrumental on Waterfest and represented SOAC with the county and city of Murfreesboro, and got a really nice letter appreciating her time and efforts and the work she did. She did a great job. Also, I was contacted a couple of weeks ago about some folks from soccer with a team of cheerleaders that was wanting to make a banner for the boys to run through as they hit the field and those kind of things, and they were having a tough time finding a place. In fact, maybe one of you actually talked with me about this. We were able to work something out. Alex down at SOAC stayed a few minutes late one night and allowed them to go into the big room in the back and lay the banner out and get it all painted up, and I received a nice note to myself, but then also to Alex. They wrote two notes, and just really just couldn't, couldn't believe that we were willing to help them out and make that happen, but the young ladies, I think, were very excited about what they got to do, and that was a nice little event for us, so thank you to Alex and SOAC and the staff down there for making that facility available. We've got just a couple of announcements. I know there's several, but Monday will be our Memorial Day service, and just wanted to remind everybody that right now the weather's looking good, so Monday, May the thirtieth at eleven AM at our Captain Coos Memorial on Lee Victory Park in the rec park at one ten Sam Ridley Parkway East, we'll be observing the Memorial Day service, and we just appreciate everybody coming out. I will remind everybody that is the day that the town offices will be closed, but I want to say thank you to our police, fire, utilities, and the parks employees and the golf courses. They continue to serve our community over the holidays. That's a busy time, especially for parks and the golf course, so thank you all for what you do. Next, I, this is something we're very proud to be bringing back for 2022, but the Fire and Police Youth Academy, June the sixth through the ninth, from nine AM to three PM. Graduation on June the tenth, and this is where our future lies. These are those folks that's going to come up through the ranks and become our next police and firefighters. They have a great time, the chief and his staff, both from the police and the fire department, do a great job of putting together a curriculum of fun and entertainment, but also very educational to these young folks as they participate. The academy is designed for children ages eight to thirteen, rising third to eighth grade students. Activities will be held at the Smyrna Fire Station Number Two, which is on Fitz U Boulevard, and students will participate in the graduation, as I said, on Friday, June the tenth. Spots still available, Chief?
Yes, sir.
So if you'll contact the fire department or the police department, we can get you signed up for that, and the cost is thirty-five dollars, so, for a week-long camp, so. Next, Todd and I had an opportunity, and I hope this picture doesn't go up on the screen, but it probably will. We had a great time, and we were invited to the community breakfast at the Lau Buddhist Temple on Old Nashville Highway. The reason, oh, good, they didn't show our feet, but we were not allowed to wear shoes in there, so I told Todd when we was outside, I said, I sure hope there's no holes in any of our socks, and there weren't, so we were good. But it was a very nice event, very unique event. If you ever get a chance to go down and be with those folks, these are the two monks that operate there at the Buddhist temple on Old Nashville Highway. Which one are the monks? They're the two in the center. But it was very entertaining, very interesting, and very educational to be there, and they had enough food. I think there were probably forty people in the room, and I think they could have fed four thousand. I've never seen so much food. It was unbelievable, but had a great time. The mayor and I, and I think a few people from the town, also were able to attend the Blue Water Fish Fry. I believe it was the same day, on May the twelfth, so I had my lunch, my breakfast and my lunch taken care of for me that day, but we appreciated Blue Water continuing to do their fish fry and the partnership we have with them as we buy some materials and those kind of things from them with the town, so thank you to Blue Water, and thank you for the business you do in Smyrna. Last but not least for me, love where you live, folks. We continue to have issues with litter all over town. You know, please, consider taking your litter from your vehicles out when you're at service stations and there's trash receptacles available, or take it home and put it in the trash. If you see trash in quantities on the streets, please call our streets department. We'll do our very best to get out there immediately and get that up before it becomes a bigger mess, and unfortunately, we do see bags of trash from time to time that are strode. Please, again, just love where you live, folks. We've got a beautiful community. Let's take some pride in it and take care of that litter issue. Mayor, that's all I have.
I should have talked to you before the meeting and didn't, but I'm going to kind of put you on the spot here. One of the, one of the opportunities we've had over the last week or two really is with our wastewater treatment plant. Can you kind of give us an update on where we are on the wastewater treatment plant, and kind of, for those that don't know, what kind of happened, and then an update?
Yes, ma'am. I'll try to make this as brief as possible. We experienced in early March a slug of chemicals that were unhealthy for our plant and damaged the plant, and most people do not realize, when you think about a wastewater treatment plant, it's more of a biological plant than it is a mechanical plant, and we have some bacteria and some bugs and things like that that run through the process to help us resolve the waste issues through the plant as we process that water then into the plant and then back out into the stream there at Stewart Creek. Basically, what happened was our plant died, and we had to deal with that, so there was a nuisance of smell throughout the town, but I think we've got that pretty much under control right now. Over the last two and a half weeks, our wastewater treatment plant, it always operates on a twenty-four-hour basis. We've had extra people in there, we've been doing some processes of waste removal through a press, and we're taking some of that to the compost and some to the dump that helps us, again, balance back down in the plant to get the, the product that came in created a heavy ammonia content in the wastewater plant, and that's very, very bad for the bacteria, but we are seeing numbers today that are beginning to get close back to normal, but we also had some bacteria that wasn't any of the solids or anything like that, but there was bacteria that had to get out of the plant, and the only way for it to get out of the plant is to go through the process and then back into the creek, so TDEC last Friday was in here and spent most of the day with us. We had been self-reporting to TDEC from day one. I'm very proud of our folks. We didn't, we didn't hide behind this, we didn't try to hide it from anyone. We actually self-reported, we worked with TDEC, they were in here last Friday, took some samples in the creek. Out of precaution of what we were seeing in the creek, we actually worked with TDEC to put a press release out. We also put some signs out, TDEC put some signs out, warning people not to take fish out of that stream from the, basically from the golf course to the mouth of Percy Priest as that process goes through, but not to wade, not to swim, and we'll continue that, for lack of better words, quarantine on that water stream, probably at least for another week. With the rain that we've had, it's helped dilute it, we're moving it through the system, but just out of general safety for the community, we don't want anybody in that creek at Volunteer Park down by Eighth, or G Street, or Eighth Street, Eighth Street, where some people fish, those kind of things, but I'm happy to report to you that we are in much better shape, and the plant is coming back to a healthy level, so.
And this has nothing to do with our drinking water?
Absolutely. In fact, the drinking water and the wastewater are in two different stream systems. The drinking water, there's nothing that you need to be concerned about, you don't need to be boiling water or any of those kind of things. That water comes out of Stones Creek, or Stones River, I'm sorry, Stones River on another body, so there's no interaction between that, other than when it gets to, both of those streams will feed into Percy Priest, but by then it's not coming back up the stream, so we're in good shape there.
Okay.
I hope I've answered your questions.
Exactly, yes, yeah.
There's a lot more to it, but that's in general what's going on.
I just wanted the public to know, there was an issue, we're dealing with the issue, and those employees at the wastewater treatment plant have been working their tails off to make sure it's being done correctly.
I do see somebody's asking the question on Facebook, has the source of the contamination been identified? I will tell you, it's under investigation. We have several sources that, you know, were a possibility, we've narrowed them down. We are working with TDEC and with the town of Smyrna, with the utilities, appropriate actions will be considered as we move forward, once we can pin this down and know for sure that the source was there, but we're, we are investigating that heavily.
Questions or comments for Brian?
Just a comment, Brian, you and the whole team, I know you've poured hours upon hours into this. I know you personally sacrificed, you leave yourself leaving town for a business trip to be here in case you needed to be, so just personally, I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank all the people that are involved getting this taken care of.
Well, thank you, and I will tell you, Mike Strange is our director of utilities, Mark Parker, our assistant director, Leland Nobles at the plant, Kyle Gill, some of these folks, they have worked, Keith, I mean, it's just been impressive to see, not only them step up, but the knowledge that they brought to the table. I will tell you, it was very satisfying for me as your town manager to send in meetings last week with TDEC all day on Friday, and really hear them say that we're doing everything we can. There was nothing they could point to, because we continued to ask, and we reached out. I will tell you, Darren Gore from Murfreesboro, we had conversations, Mr. Strickland, the plant operator for Murfreesboro, they were here, we called on them, we were looking for answers. If there was something somebody had done in the same situation somewhere else, and we could learn from that, we were not hesitant to ask for that help, and a lot of people came to the table and helped us with that, but it was very satisfying to know that we were doing everything physically possible to make, make best we could out of a bad, bad situation.
Okay, thank you, sir. Jeffrey, you?
Nothing for me, ma'am.
Rockell?
Yes, Jim and Chris, welcome. Glad to have you on the team and in the town of Smyrna. Condolences to the Jones and the NoDine families, and also congratulations to all the graduates from the schools over the last couple of weeks. And lastly, regarding Memorial Day, just want to say everyone, please be safe and remember what the reason for this holiday is.
Great, thank you. Chief?
Condolences to our town family members, and also I'd like to send out thoughts and prayers to the Shrock family. Koi has, Koi Shrock passed away recently, he was a couple of years behind us in school, and it's been kind of tough on the family. Mr. and Ms. Shrock just passed away recently, and it's a very good family from within our community. Also, I hope everybody has a safe Memorial Day. When you buy your hot dogs or whatever you're going to cook, buy them locally. If you eat barbecue, buy it locally, the restaurants also. And then, that's all I've got tonight, Mayor Esther.
Okay, Mayor Esther, before you go on, one more thing. Ms. Donna Shelton is retiring. She is an EA at Cedar Stone School, and so I would like to tell her congratulations on retiring.
Great. Yes, congratulations. And also, our thoughts go out to Duke Shrock, too. Duke was on our parks board for many years and carried change at Smyrna High School football games for forever, and so thinking about Duke, too. Yeah. Tim?
I'll add my condolences to our Smyrna family that have lost loved ones, and also, I know it's never enough, but to extend my gratitude to the men and the women that made the ultimate sacrifice to preserve our nation, and also to the families that have been left without a loved one. There's no way, there's no way in words to express gratitude enough, other than to say, you know, the appreciation is enormous.
Great. Jerry?
Yeah, I was looking at my list, and there's so much sorrow on it. My condolences to the families here in Smyrna, and our, the loss that they've had. I also had the Shrock family on my list, Harold Whitley family, that just passed away, and then those, the families of those children that were lost and that were killed senselessly in Texas. Just don't understand, but my thoughts and prayers go out to all of those. School's going to be out starting tomorrow, so I hope all the kids and the teachers have a great summer. Mark, I know your wife is retiring, so congratulations to Connie, and Donna, I did not know you were retiring, but congratulations to you as well. I can tell you it's a pretty good gig, so enjoy it. Memorial Day, as has been mentioned before, just so thankful for those that sacrificed, the families that lost loved ones. So appreciative, so thank you. I want to thank you for that, and hope everyone has a great Memorial Day. And the last thing, I just wanted to let this group here know that I'm a little disappointed in all of you, because I expected at least one age comment tonight, and I didn't get any, so that was, that was kind of nice of you, I guess, or not nice of you, but Steve still, like I say, Steve still got to come up and Mark and Mayor Esther, so I may get one.
I was going to say something about the retirement, but I missed that one.
Steve?
Memorial Day, obviously, you know, this holiday often gets, everyone says Happy Memorial Day, but it's really, for the Gold Star families that are affected by those people that have given the ultimate sacrifice, it's not always a happy day, but it's important that we let them know that their sacrifice isn't in vain, that we appreciate the sacrifice that the family has had to make in the loss of their loved one, and, you know, that's really what Memorial Day is about, is showing your gratitude to those Gold Star families that are having to deal with this regularly. There's not much else. Jerry, you're old, and I'm done.
I feel better now. I'll just start with that, Jerry, you're old. I feel better now, thank you.
Brian, I did receive a nice note from Katie as well regarding the cheerleaders and how they were taken care of, and so, you know, one of the things I try to teach when I teach real estate agents about how to communicate, it's about personal notes, so I'm always glad to get one, means a lot, especially when they're constructive and encouraging, because in what we do, sometimes everything we see and read on Facebook or whatever is not always encouraged. not always encouragement. So the encouragement is so well appreciated. And I won't say, I don't know if Katie's watching or will, but I thank her for that. I've got something here about the Avid Hotel. We had some of us be able to attend the ribbon cutting. They've been open for a little while, but they just got around to doing their ribbon cutting. So we had a great day. I think the mayor, myself, Jerry, Brian, Todd, I think you were there. They gave away some free popcorn and some good stuff over there. We had a good day. For Memorial Day, there it is. And so for Memorial Day, too, I want to thank everybody and their families for the sacrifices. You know, he said it's not a happy Memorial Day for a lot of people. As an old brat from the military, I have a fondness for our military families. And what a lot of people don't seem to remember sometimes is that it is a family affair. It's not just the person that sacrificed and made that sacrifice. Their, you know, their families did too. So I want to remember those people. Jerry mentioned the Texas shooting. I mentioned that in my prayer when we opened. Senseless. And I don't know what this world is coming to sometimes, but that is just wrong. That's just a fallen world in some capacity that shouldn't take place. To the NoDyne family and the Jones family, the Shirok family, and you mentioned Doak, and I was going to mention him as well. He's not well. He's, I want to give a shout out to him and our condolences to those that had losses. Donna, congratulations on your retirement. I have a wife at home probably watching right now that's probably jumping up and down because she's got two hours left in her 28 career, 28-year career. And so she's excited. She's looking forward to that. She has a birthday coming as well. So not only is she retiring after 28 years, she's celebrating her 40th birthday. So do the math. She started young. So congratulations to Connie. Happy birthday. Love her. Want to let her know that. That's all I have.
So a couple of items. Simply Smyrna is coming up. It will be Saturday, June the 4th from 6:00 to 10:00. It is hosted by Carpe Artista and will be held in the Depot District, and this is a fantastic, family-friendly event. We also have our Town of Smyrna Boat Day, and we are excited to host it on Saturday, June the 18th from 9:00 to 1:00 at Jefferson Springs Recreation Area. Come out. Everything is free and we are giving two kayaks away. And there'll be free kayak and canoe rides. Our Farmer's Market, Smyrna Depot Farmer's Market started, will be starting back, got started back on May the 21st and will run through September 17th. The market will be open from 8:00 to noon every Saturday and will host an array of farm and food vendors along with artisans and crafters. I actually had to work last Saturday, so I was not able to be there, but it looked like from the pictures that it was a great turnout. Our Independence Day celebration is back and it will, the town will host its, the annual day on Friday, July the 1st at Lee Victory Recreation Park, beginning at 5:00 p.m. The celebration will include live music and a variety of vendors, and fireworks will begin at dark. And Chief, they're going to be the biggest and best yet, right?
Oh, yeah.
Of course. Okay, good. Thanks, Chief. Brian and I actually, on May 11th, got to enjoy lunch with the consulate general from Japan. And we were joined by the deputy consulate general. And if you all remember, the consulate general, she was here with us when we signed the agreement with Zama. And he said that he has just gotten here
January.
January. So not been here very long, but we had a great lunch and he is excited to continue the partnership that we have had with them. So, and asked to be included in events that we have here in Smyrna. Next is the Thurman Francis Arts Academy Tennessee History Living Museum. I actually got to attend this on Tuesday. It was fifth-grade students at Thurman Francis, and they either were, they either talked about the judicial, the executive, or the legislative branch. I had to think for a second. Legislative branch. And then there was also some that dealt with music. And the students had to dress up and then they had to tell you about themselves. The young man in the far-left corner, I actually got an email that I actually, Carl, you'll be proud to know that I was a little worried it might be a scam. So I was very hesitant to even reply. Took it upon himself to email me. Didn't ask his mom, didn't ask the teacher, anybody. He said, "I have some questions for you." Well, we emailed back and forth about 12 times with questions, and the last email said, "Are you free on Tuesday?" And I thought, okay, he's either asking me to school or asking me on a date, one or the other. I wasn't sure. And he asked me if I would come to his school. And so I got to go and Representative Sparks was also there. And the students did an amazing job learning about the individual people that they represented as well as the subject matter. So, and Bryson, who was up in the far-right corner, I was actually having dinner Saturday night at a restaurant here in town. And he walked up and introduced himself and asked me if I was the mayor. I said, "Yes." He said, "I am so excited. You're coming to my class on Tuesday." And he proceeded, he was Governor Bill Lee, and proceeded to tell me all about his part. But I thought for a fifth grader to walk up in a restaurant to introduce themselves, I don't know that I would have had the guts to have done that in fifth grade. So I appreciate being asked. Next is Stewart's Borough Living History Museum. Brian, myself, Rex, Todd, Jerry. Was that? Yeah, I was trying to remember. We all got to go to Stewart's Borough for the same thing. It was the entire fifth grade that put that on. And they also had the second gra, was it second grade that was in there? Were they second graders that came around asking the questions? They had to come around and ask each one of the individuals who they were, what was important about them. So they really did a nice job and we appreciate being invited. Last on the slides, congratulations to Stewart's Creek Middle School Lady Falcon softball on Friday, May the 20th. Jerry and myself gathered with students and faculty to send them off to play on Friday. And I will tell you, the students lined the halls to send the team off. They won that game and went on to play on Saturday and are now the 2022 TMSAA Class 2A softball state champions. So congratulations to the coaches and the girls on their win.
Mayor, we haven't had a chance to discuss this, but they will be here at our next council meeting to receive some certificates from the council and town managers.
Perfect. Good. I think you will be pretty impressed with these young ladies. We also want to say thank you to Brian. We did Brian's yearly evaluation today. And Brian does an amazing job for us here in the town. Steve talked a little bit about it. 24 hours a day, pretty much, you can get Brian on the phone. And he is constantly, the Town of Smyrna is what is forefront in his mind. And we appreciate the job that you do and we look forward to working with you over this next year. Also, want to talk a little bit about Texas and the teachers. I can't imagine being a teacher in that school with those babies. And I just want to say thank you to all the teachers for everything that they do day in and day out. So many times during the school year, they get to see your children more than you do, because by the time you get home and feed them and give them their bath or their shower or whatever, it's bedtime. So they make such an impact on students and those that are coming up to be citizens in our community. And they've got a really, really tough job. And I just appreciate each one of the teachers and the staff that work with our students every day. And they never know when somebody might come in that door, like happened in Texas. Also, want to thank law enforcement, too, because they've got a tough job. And I know that they're struggling there, the ones that are having to deal with that. I hope you will come out and be with us on Monday at 11:00 at the Jeff Coos Memorial as we honor those individuals and those families for Memorial Day. And anything else?
Ma'am.
Counsel, anything else? Nothing else. We are adjourned.